This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large Council, Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large Council, Lindsey McLemore, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're glad to have you with us. We're going to begin today as we begin all of our meetings, and that's by asking God's grace and presence on these proceedings. And we'd like to invite Pastor Tim Jones to the podium from the pastor of the Columbus Baptist Association. If you'd hit that button, Tim, I'll get that thing turned on.
How about that?
Yes, sir.
All right. It takes a little bit for some of us to figure out the technology.
That's me.
All right, let's pray together. Father, what a blessing it is to be able to come together and do the business of our city. We pause in these moments to praise you and to worship you, for you are the one true living God, and there's none other like you. Not only will you not share your glory with another, you do everything to glorify yourself, and we know that that is good for us. We also pause in these moments to ask for your blessing and to ask for your wisdom. Your word says that if any of us lack wisdom, to ask you for it, and that you will provide it liberally and without reproach. Father, we believe that, and we believe that you will provide wisdom to these council members. Father, we ask that you would give them wisdom that goes beyond their experience. We pray that you'd give them wisdom that is filled with justice and fairness. Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom that is filled with morality and with goodness. Father, we pray your blessings over them as they bless our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate very much. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the August 26th meeting. It's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any edits, any comments, or questions on them? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, they are passed. We've got a couple of proclamations that we want to bring to your attention this week. First, former councillor Wayne Anthony, current pastor. Wayne Anthony is here for Public Safety Week. I'm not sure who we gave that to. You got it, all right. Councillor Hickey is going to present that.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Well, it's truly an honor and privilege for me to be able to read this, being former law enforcement and part of public safety, and understanding all the hard work that goes into this profession. So, once again, it's an honor for me to read this and share this and give this to you, so I'll begin.
Thank you for all your use of service.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you. And it reads, "Whereas on September 11th, 2001, four passenger jets were hijacked and crashed into the World Trade Center towers. The Pentagon and a field in Shankfield, Pennsylvania, killing nearly 3,000 people. And whereas during the week of September 11th, 2025, our nation and world was paused to remember the lives lost and the families forever changed by the events of that day. And whereas on that day, knowing the dangers they faced, police officers, firefighters, and emergency responders bravely rushed into the burning buildings to save lives of the 2,977 people who died. 412 were public safety personnel, making September 11th, 2001, one of the deadliest days in America firefighter and law enforcement history. And whereas of the more than 334 million Americans today, nearly 2.9 million served in public safety roles, meaning approximately 1% of the population protects the other 99%, including residents, visitors, students, and workers across the nation. And whereas each year, there are over 60,000 assaults on law enforcement officers, resulting in more than 1,800 injuries and an average of 160 line-of-duty deaths. And whereas annually, over 60,000 firefighters are injured in the line of duty and more than 100 tragically lose their lives while serving their communities. And whereas in Columbus, Georgia, our public safety departments, including fire, police, fire, and EMS chair of office, and animal control, respond to over 42,000 calls per year and continue to maintain the highest level of accreditation for multiple national and state public safety agencies. And whereas the people of Columbus, Georgia, take this time to recognize, honor, and applaud the more than 700 dedicated men and women of our public safety department who risk their lives every day and night to protect the community. And whereas in light of recent challenges and public scrutiny faced by those in public safety, it is both proper and necessary to affirm, support, and express gratitude to the men and women who serve with courage, integrity, and commitment across America. Now, therefore, I, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Public Safety Week. Thank you."
And that applause goes to all the people in public safety, and it's remarkable that you have one person for every 100 people is a public safety that protects all of us. I appreciate the fact that the city council continues to each year honor and recognize people in public safety and for those who make that sacrifice. That's the number-one role of government. We're reminded of that when we take office. The other thing is, next year will be the 25th anniversary of 9/11. And 9/11 is a defining moment for a generation, or two generations at least, like Pearl Harbor was or John F. Kennedy's assassination. We will have those kind of things as a result of this past week as well. So, thank you to the council for recognizing and remembering the sacrifice made by the people and the families of those in public safety. Have with me another colleague that helps us as we plan for the House of Heroes program, Susan Wood. We're delighted to be here and thanks to the council.
Thank you.
Well, Pastor Anthony, thank you for spearheading this. You've been doing this now for several years and recognizing our public safety and first responders. And, you know, now more than ever, our country needs to pull together like we did following that tragedy during that time. And the other important thing to remember is that there's a whole generation, people who are 24 years old, weren't alive when that happened. So, it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to make sure that they're educated as to the fact that there are people out there that would do us harm just because they envy our way of life and our government. And it should spur us to treat each other with more respect, more compassion, more love. And right now in our country, I'm not sure that's happening. So, this is an opportunity to get refocused, re-centered on the things that makes this country great and makes us Americans and makes us alike, not different. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done, and we're very grateful. If you would, come around, let us present this to you, and thank you for your efforts.
All right, next, we've got a proclamation acknowledging Big Brothers and Big Sisters Month, and councillor Chambers is going to read this into the record. If we could have any...
It just popped up on you.
Good morning.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
What an honor to be able to recognize the Big Brothers and Big Sisters Day, and just want to say thank you for your commitment. Big Brothers and Big Sisters have been around a long time, and thank you for the impact that you've made on our community, assisting with mentorship, youth development, and things of that nature. So, I would like to read this proclamation. "Whereas the mission of Big Brothers, Big Sisters is to create and support one-on-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth, a purpose that guides every effort to uplift and empower children across our region. And whereas the vision of Big Brothers, Big Sisters is that all youth achieve their full potential, a goal that reflects the organization's unwavering commitment to equity, opportunity, and long-term impact. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Chattahoochee Valley has served as a cornerstone of youth development and mentorship in our community, providing consistent, compassionate support to children and families for decades. And whereas the organization has positively impacted countless lives through its evidence-based mentoring programs, which pair caring adult volunteers with young people to build trust, confidence, and life skills. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters strives to encourage more volunteers to join the mentoring movement by giving of their time, talent, and treasure, recognizing that community involvement is essential to sustaining meaningful relationships and expanding the reach of mentorship. And whereas through the dedication of its staff, board members, and volunteer mentors, mentees, mentors, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Chattahoochee Valley continues to address the needs of youth facing adversity, helping them overcome challenges and achieve their goals. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley community is stronger, more compassionate, and more connected because of the tireless efforts of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the mentors who serve as role models, advocates, and champions for our youth. Now, therefore, I, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, as Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day. Thank you."
Do I need to hit the button? Don't need to, okay. Well, first of all, thank you so much for this opportunity for us to be here today, not just to represent our agency, but kind of represent what we do. This month is actually Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month across the country. And today is just one of those days where I was able, you know, just able to share this opportunity with everybody here. It has Kwame Johnson on the proclamation, but I'm Erin Griffin. I should have started off with that. I'm Erin Griffin. I'm the senior manager for the program here in Columbus, and I have my two coordinators here with me today, too. Last year, they left me by myself, but I dragged them up here with me today because we're three women over this whole program with 10 counties. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of hard work, but we are very dedicated to the, you know, just making sure our youth have a great future. And we have some really, really great volunteers that come into this program that mentor these kids. I mean, sometimes they go above and beyond what mentorship means. This year, we had three graduating seniors graduate, not only from Big Brothers, Big Sisters because you age out of 18, but they, all three of them graduated from high school, and all three of them went off to college. And that's just like a proud moment for us because, you know, all three of those kids came in at a young, you know, at a young age, and they were with their mentors the whole entire time. And, you know, those mentors, you know, were really dedicated and, you know, steered them to go to college and, you know, just have a brighter future. So, like, you know, I'm talking a lot. I want to see if I can go on and on and on about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. But you guys want to say anything? Okay, okay, I guess I said everything. But yes, definitely, thank you so much.
Y'all did an amazing job, and we appreciate it. It's organizations like y'all that fill in the gaps and are critical to mentoring these young people who may not have a mentor to look to. So, thank you. If you would come around, let us shake your hand, and I'll present you with your proclamation.
All right, and next, we've got a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Week. So, if we could get our folks up here. We appreciate so much y'all coming every year. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to publish this proclamation regarding the Constitution. And it reads as follows. "Whereas the United States Constitution, America's most important document, stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. Whereas Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through the 23rd to commemorate its history, importance, and bring attention to how it serves still today. Whereas the celebration of Constitution was started by the Daughters of American Revolution in 1955. Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. Whereas the resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas the aims of Constitution Week celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibility for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's greatest heritage and the foundation of our way of life, and to encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in 1787. Now, therefore, Columbus Mayor Skip Henderson does hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week."
Hi, I'm Marsha Newer. I'm the Regent of Oglethorpe Chapter of the DAR. Thank y'all so much for having us here today and for recognizing the Constitution. What people tend to forget is that the Constitution is a statement of our national principles rather than governmental operations, and it constantly evolves to meet the changing needs of society when you think about all the amendments that have gone through and such. The Constitution serves as a cornerstone of our great nation, and we appreciate, as we approach our 250th anniversary, we are so grateful to be a part of this great country and the principles upon which it was founded. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to say anything?
I would just say thank you on behalf of Julie Hobbs from George Walton Chapter, DAR, and also from the Lucy Spell Rayford Children of the American Revolution Society. We appreciate you honoring us.
Gentlemen?
Charles Hall Jr., Sergeant of Arms, Coweta Falls, Elijah Clark Militia, Georgia Society Sons of American Revolution. On behalf of the Coweta Falls Chapter, I'd just like to thank the council for letting us to recognize Constitution Week, of course, all the hard work it took to ratify the Constitution through all the 13 colonies, and continue to support us as we celebrate our 250th anniversary.
James Hall, Catofuf, Sons of American Revolution. Just want to say thank you for having us.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming every year, and we appreciate the reenactment that you participated in as we kicked off the, sort of, the birthday of our country. So, we appreciate all that y'all have done. If you would come around, let us thank you, and I'll present you with your proclamation. All right, we do have one resolution on the mayor's agenda, and that is to authorize an audit by the internal auditor of the Office of Crime Prevention. Motion and second to approve that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved. The city attorney will move on to your agenda, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Got a fairly lengthy business agenda. First item up, we need a vote on the zoning increase in units at 9101 Laken Road, Midland Downs, just ready for action.
Mayor Pro Tem has comments, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this rezoning. And let me go ahead and say for the record, I've spoken with several constituents regarding the apartments and the rezoning and answered a lot of questions. And I wanted to say, too, that, second, the president of the company, Philip Fayer, has gone out of his way, I think, above and beyond what normally happens in rezonings. He's met with us as a group out there. I think the mayor was there and a few others. We had quite a good turnout and a lot of conversation. He has since met with the HOA from Midland Downs and responded to a lot of questions there. The vote in 2011, which originally approved the apartments, I voted against. And now, we're here at a point where the economy's changed, construction costs have increased, and I feel compelled to, if we're going to have a project like this built out, that I feel compelled to make it the best we can make it. And that's why I'm going to vote for it. So, I would appreciate council support, and again, Mayor, make the motion to pass this resolution.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, if you would, put it on the screen, and councillors, you can enter your votes, please. Councillor Davis, you are... Oh, you got it?
It's approved.
All right, that's approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gentlemen, thank y'all for being here. That's approved. Next, zoning, well, it's a street map change. Mayor Debutante Drive, correction. It's ready for action.
Motion second to approve that item. Any discussion on it? All right, please put it on the screen, and councillors, you can register your vote. All right, and that passes.
It's approved. The next item is the court pay increase that we discussed before. It's ready for action.
Motion's approved, second.
Motion second to approve court pay. Any further discussions on that item? Please put it on the screen, and councillors, please vote.
That's passed.
Okay, that's approved.
All right, we've got some zoning hearings. First one is a hearing for 2506 Riverside Drive. They want to go from residential multifamily 2 to residential multifamily 1 with conditions. There's a proponent here. Mr. Renfro Johnson, who's the petitioner on this? Taylor.
Good morning. The petitioner for this one is Marion Taylor, and I don't believe, I do not see her.
All right. Pleasure of the council, we normally delay this. Delay the first reading and come back with it when they're present.
There's a motion second to delay this. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We'll just delay it, I guess, till next week.
Okay. Bring that one back. The next item is zoning at 10923rd Street. They want to go residential 2 to single-family residential 4. It's recommended for approval. Petitioner here on that one? All right. You can give them your name and address, sir.
Good morning, Ryan Clements, 803 First Avenue.
All right, any questions around the table?
I don't see any.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Clements petition. All right, we'll bring it back for a vote. Now, we're going, we have a consent agenda next week. We'll bring it back then.
Next week, we have a regular meeting.
That's the regular meeting, so a second reading, all right. Thanks, sir. That'll be a 5:30 meeting. Then we've got 5350 Veterans Parkway. This is going to General Commercial from SFR 3. It's recommended approval. Give them your name and address, please, ma'am.
Renee Hammond, 521 Twin Berry Lane.
All right. Any questions around the table on this?
No.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Okay, we'll bring that back next week for a vote at 5:30. Next one is 2210 Wenton Road. Want to go neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Recommended for approval. Ms. Flurnoy here. We've got somebody with applicant. Give them your name and address, please.
Good morning, my name is Wassel Lewis, and it's my lovely wife, Jarnita Lewis. We are at 507 Biggest Road.
Okay, any questions around the table?
No, sir.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Okay.
I do have something for the council members, if Ms. Lindsey... For your consideration.
Councillor Huff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here this morning. Council, if you get a chance, please go by and take a look at the property. Mrs. Flurnoy and the applicants here, the Lewis family, have put a lot of work and money into this. She's trying, Mrs. Flurnoy is trying to... Uh, she's trying, Mrs. Flurnoy is trying to redevelop that whole area, that entire building, and bring another tenants in to beautify that area. Uh, they have come in and done a marvelous job. Did not have the information, so I told them we will work on it as far as what they needed to do. So they have completed everything out, but they didn't know they needed to have a zoning change. They had to go back and pull some permits and things, and do some things in decent and in order. So everything's been done in order, uh, and I asked them to please come by this morning and bring you something to take a look at. But if you get a chance, go by and look at it, because this is going to be an outstanding project in that area. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councillor Kogle? Councillor Kogle?
I just wanted, uh, just before you left, I just wanted to say that I've, I've been following you guys along online, and the, um, and the res- the enthusiasm from the community is, is amazing. So, good luck. I'm, I'm really excited about this for you and, uh, this part of, part of the district, so congratulations.
Thank you so much, we deeply appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that handout is part of the record. We'll vote on that next week at the five-thirty meeting. The next item up, Mayor, is an ordinance to provide a permit and inspection fee for solar panel work. Total fee of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any questions around the table? Mr. Pruitt is here.
No, I don't see any questions.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we can just, Ryan, if you would, councillor, like you just kind of walk through what this is gonna do.
Yes, good morning, uh, Mayor, members of city council, Mr. City Attorney, Madam Deputy City Manager. So this proposal is essentially to add a new permit type for inspections and codes. For the longest time, we've had, you know, permit types, building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, gas, has kind of been our basic permit types. This would allow the creation of a solar permit. Uh, what we see with businesses or, uh, residential properties, installing solar panels, the way the process works right now, is we issue them a building permit for any structural modifications, you know, putting the panels on the roof or whatever other modifications they may need. And then we issue one or two electrical permits, uh, depending on the exact scope of the electrical work. This change would, um, allow us to issue one permit, so, you know, half the paperwork for the customer, half the paperwork for our staff. Most of the time with solar panels, it's the same company doing both the structural work and the electrical work, they're licensed to do both. Especially with our new portal that we have online, this change will make it much easier for both our customers and staff to review these, process them, and really just be more efficient. Um, and the fees, that's what we, that's what you would pay now, there's no, you know, increase in fee for the solar panels or anything like that. It's simply just a change to try to make things more efficient.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all the questions, we'll vote on that next week. And Mr. Pruitt's gonna stay here. We've got a demolition ordinance proposal with eight properties. As I understand it, number two, Carmel Court, should be removed at this time?
Yes, sir, we were notified earlier this week, um, that the owner of that property, shown on the presentation, has sold it to, um, another individual, and so we need to restart the process with that new owner.
All right, well, we'll call these out. If anybody's present on these properties, please raise your hand or speak up. Uh, the first property is thirty-four oh seven Victory Drive, Ricky Johnson, owner. Got a hand? Is that Mr. Johnson? Okay, come on. Okay, give me your name and address, sir, and then we can
All right.
see where you are on the property.
Yes, sir. Uh, Rick Johnson at, uh, one oh three North Fourth Street in Oak Lake, Alabama, is where I live. What was the question, sir?
No, you need to, uh, present to council where you are, the status of, status of the property.
Okay, uh, we both, we all agree that the building needs to come down. It was, uh, I had a catastrophic fire back in the day, and, uh, I've secured funds to be able to tear this property down, but I won't be able to tap on those funds till the first of the year. And what I'd like to see, if the city council will allow me that time. Miller was talking about tearing it down, but I, his, his price is a little high, and I think I can do a little bit better than that. But I will have all the funds for December first, if you guys will allow me to do that.
Okay. Councillor Ken?
Councillor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson, so, uh, if, if you allow it this time, and once it's torn down, what, what is the, uh, plan for the property then?
Well, I've had that property up for sale, and I've actually talked with the person that owns the property, to the next, uh, the tattoo painter next door. And ideally, for the city of Columbus, we need to tear both of them down and put a, uh, like a franchise business there. Well, it, it, it was hard to get the seller to agree to sell that property, and my property by itself wouldn't, nobody would want it. But the two properties together would be a perfect place for a Chick-fil-A or, you know, a franchise business, and that's what needs to go there. So I did get the gentleman that owns that property to the right of me to agree to a, a realtor to get a hold of it. He has, they have it on the market, and our goal was to sell that property together. It would be a lot easier to tear it all down at the same time, and I, I think we can get a buyer for it instead of just one and one. I mean, I would invite that, I want my building down, there's no doubt. The bill, the picture on the right is not mine. I don't know where that picture came from, but definitely the picture on the left is mine. I don't know where that picture from the right came from, I don't know. Anyways, uh, so, yeah, we want the building down, but we want to get it down, uh, effectively cost-wise, and, and again, I have a statement from my bank that will, I will have that money to be able to tear it down. It's a, the, the estimate was fifty-two thousand dollars. That's, I can almost put a building up for that much. But, uh, if you guys will allow me the ability to do this, I can knock it out, and I can get it squared away at first of the year.
And when you say about the first of the year, uh, do you have a, a deadline?
No, the first of the year.
A closing time with, with, with your bank?
Uh, I, uh, the funds will be available January one.
Okay.
I mean, we have the money in the bank, but it, every, it's, it's a family estate, my family estate, that I'm drawing the funds from, and I won't be able to touch that money until the first of December, I mean, first of January.
And when, and when did you have this fire there at, at your?
Oh, God, it's been years. It's been years. And, and, and the front was okay, but it just, we had the front awning part fall down.
Okay.
And once that happened, it just started, it started stepping off and, and look, being, becoming a big eyesore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Crabbe?
Thank you. Ryan, how are you on your list? I mean, where, would this come up after January first, any way to be demoed?
Come on in, buddy.
Um, so with the seven properties, that would be, um, assuming they were, you know, approved next week, of course, they would start, you know, about a week after with demolition. We could certainly put this, you know, at the bottom of the list, and I'd be glad to work with Mr. Johnson, you know, to get, um, I'm sure he can provide the documentation, you know, from the bank that illustrates, you know, that he has the funding availability, and, um, you know, we'd be glad to work with him if, you know, if we put this at the bottom of the seven, it would probably be pretty close to the first of the year by the time, you know, that they got to it, um, as it stands. So, you know, again, we'd be glad to work with them, um, administratively, to see, you know, him take care of it.
Mr. Johnson, we usually don't take, um, properties off the list when they get to this point.
Yes, ma'am.
But if you would work with Ryan, I think that he'll work with you, because it's in the best interest of both parties, the city and you, to not incur a cost, the city to incur a cost from this. And so if you just stay in touch with Ryan and, and you guys work this out, but it will remain on the list.
That's fine, and, and we will do that. I appreciate that. All right, thank you. Are we good?
Well, we've got a few others.
Okay.
That want to speak, and, and I. Councillor Kogle?
What is your, uh, anticipated demo time, once you have the, have the funds? Will that be fairly immediate?
Well, yes, I mean, it takes two weeks and, and you get to the ground. I mean, you know, when they haul it all off and everything.
I, I, I mean, I was just, I guess I was inferring more of, once funds are secure, are you gonna be ready to go, like, immediately? Or will that be pushed out?
No, it just, de, uh, January one is my target date. I can come in there, I'll have the funds to be able to pay the person, and then it'll be done. And, and they knock them out pretty fast.
Okay.
I mean, I had another building turned, torn down by Miller, and I watched it tore down, and, and a day and a half, it was gone.
I, I mean, I agree, I agree with Councillor Crabbe of, if we can just work with, um, if you can work with Ryan and, uh, the inspections and codes, as long as we stay on that approximate timeline, uh, if, if it gets put to the end of the list. But I would just hope that we just don't run into any delays, since that is a, a little bit of an eyesore that I
A bad eyesore, I understand.
That, that a lot of people count, contact me and, um, about, and coming down Victory Drive, and we have a pretty, um, hard effort on cleaning up that part of South Columbus, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem? Hang on.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is, as, as has been mentioned, this is kind of unusual. Ryan, would you feel better if we had a letter of intent from him to kind of document that this is the intent of, uh, moving forward and that, uh, so I, I, I would like to ask council to consider that, too. Uh, I, I think, I think for the record, you know,
It's fine.
God forbid something happened to you, but, you know, at least there's a history there of something that the city can rely on.
I think that's fair.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can work with Mr. Johnson between now and next Tuesday at second reading, and be able to provide something to council.
Okay, all right, well, I'd like, make a motion that a letter of intent be required and, uh, get that to, uh, Mr. Pruitt.
All right, there's a motion second to require a letter of intent. Any questions or discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, Councillor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I, I just got a couple, uh, points of clarification and then a couple of questions. But usually, you know, maybe the citizens realize this, maybe they don't, but by the time it gets to us, it's been about, I accurate to say, about a two-year process. It's a lengthy process that, uh, that, there's plenty of time involved in here for property owners to, to make good decisions. I appreciate the willingness to, uh, to try to go ahead and get something done now. I, I, I do, uh, you know, I, I'm not willing to extend it any further unless we do have those agreements and the paperwork, and I don't think that we're taking it off the list. I think it stays on the list. And it's usually the discretion of the city manager as they move forward. So you know that if there's no progress or anything is done, you, you, you've given us a date today on record.
I understand.
That if it doesn't happen, it comes down.
It's fair, that's fair.
So I would want the city to continue the path to, to have everything in order, in line, so, uh, everybody keeps their obligations. The other thing is that I, I don't know the current state of the property right now, but if there's any safety issues or things like that, or anything that needs to be cleaned up out in, where people are seeing it, where it hinders development in that area, we've had several people make comments about those specific, uh, points
Right.
within that area about the, uh, neglect of properties and so forth. So, um, I, I would, uh, I, I would ask for that, just, just doing the right thing here, and that gives me a better willingness to work with you. Uh, but I'm, I'm like my other colleagues, this is kind of unusual. We don't, we don't usually do this.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, as long as the process is still moving, I think that's, uh, that's grounds to be able to try to work to get this thing moving in the right direction. Ultimately, I wish you the best, you're right. There's good land out there, a lot of people, they, they don't want to mess with it because what they see.
Yeah.
Uh, they just like, nah, I can't do this, I'm going somewhere else.
Right.
But cleaning it up, it gives a transformation, and people really start to say, hey, that land has some value now, and maybe I can do something with it. So that's our goal, so, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the questions, Mr. Johnson. What I'll add, though, is that usually when we provide an opportunity for people to have a couple of, put it last on the list, that's a win-win.
Right.
Because they're trying to fix it up, and our goal is try to get all these things fixed up. This is really just to help you.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this is not a benefit to the community that rides by there and sees that every day.
Right.
So, you know, I, I would just urge you to make haste, try to get it down just as quick as you can, secure it, clean it up a little bit, stuff that you don't have to do with a heavy influx of cash.
Right.
And, um, kind of show council that, that you're serious about trying to make that place look a little better.
That's fair.
All right. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, I'll keep talking.
All right. That will remain on the list. The item two has been removed, Carmel Court, onto fifteen fifty-three Holland Avenue. Homer Jenkins, Jr. is listed as owner. Is anybody present on that property? Don't see anybody, Mayor.
Yeah, that was removed.
Been taken off the list, Carmel. All right, two two five Twenty-first Avenue, Marcelo Ramirez, owner. Anybody here on that property? Okay, no hands. Five seventeen Chesterfield Avenue, Tawana McKelvey, owner. Anybody present? Okay, come on up, ma'am. Give them your name and address, please, and tell us the status of this property.
Hello, my name is Tawana McKelvey. The property address is five seventeen Chesterfield. My address is fifty-four ninety-two Saratoga Drive, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine oh seven. This property, I have not done any, any work on. I know it's been a while since I've owned it. Honestly, I just didn't have the money, um, to do the work. Just recently secured a loan to do the work, so if you guys could give me like just a thirty days, I could come back with proof of everything that I've done so far. I went and got the grass cut last week, and I've secured a dumpster to haul, like, all the wood and old furniture out of it. I bought it from the auction years ago, and I've just basically been paying taxes on it with the intent to eventually remodel it, and time just got away from me.
So your intent is to refurbish it?
It, it is.
Do you, uh, in the past, what we've asked is that you bring, uh, something to verify that you've got the funds and some type of contract with a licensed contractor, and, and some things that you can provide to, to Ryan about demonstrating your intent to get that done.
Right, and I've, I've been speaking with the contractor, but he's actually licensed, licensed in Alabama. So he's in the process of trying to get his license, I guess, in Georgia, because he's already given me an estimate and everything.
Councillor Huff?
Thank you. If you could, um, based on what we just finished doing, if you could get with Ryan, we, we, we have to have proof.
Okay.
Yeah, that you put it down in writing.
Okay.
Your intentions.
Absolutely.
And timelines.
Okay.
And, uh, proof of funding, so we, so we can work with you. I need, uh, Ryan to give me some idea, what, what is the timeline as far as, uh, the renovation piece? Do you have any idea?
Well, like I said, I, I secured a dumpster, I'm gonna get over there this week, and we're gonna get everything hauled off.
So you're starting right away? Okay.
Right, um, I'm just waiting on him to get his license squared away in, in Georgia, so we can get the, um,
How long does it, how long does it look to be, the project timeline? What does it look like, once you get started?
Um, he was supposed to be there today, um, speaking to someone, so as soon as I leave out of here, I'll have to give him a call.
Okay, I mean, once he's licensed and starts to work, how long?
Um, he said thirty to sixty days.
Thirty to sixty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Director Pruitt? Is that?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Could you get with her and get something in writing?
Yes, yeah, we could get, um, all the information, as you mentioned, you know, the proof of funding, a contract with a contractor, um, and all that, and, you know, have it next week, you know, for council's, um, consideration. And typically, um, on demolition list properties, you know, if there's an active permit that's been pulled and there is active work happening at that, you know, we don't go in there and kick them out as they're fixing it up and working it. So as long as there's steady process, you know, or progress, um, with a, with a licensed contractor with an active permit, you know, then we will work with property owners, you know, give them time to, but you can't start and then disappear for six months. You gotta keep, keep it going.
Would you, would you mind getting with her, explaining that it's still on the list? And it'll move, he can move it down, but he needs proof of timelines and everything, and if it's not followed, then he will proceed to, uh, demolish, uh, the city will, uh, proceed to demolish the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and I will, I will suggest to you, ma'am, Ms. McKelvey, that, uh, typically when we've given that time and you've got a timeline, you gotta make sure you hit it, because the day, the day, and, and you've done this before, I can tell you. you gotta make sure you hit it. Because the day, and you've done this before, I can tell you. But, but we run into issues where if it's not, if you miss that timeline and we take it down, then you've put good money after bad. So just have to make sure it's, it's a timeline that you can live with on that. Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, quick question. The, the second picture to the right, is that the, what, what is that?
That's the back of the house. I, I'm not sure. It looks like something maybe heated. I, I'm not sure. I bought it from an auction. So it was like that when I bought it.
And how long have you owned the property?
I purchased it in 2019.
2019?
Yes, so it's been a long time, I know. I, I pay property taxes on it every year. It, the, the yard doesn't look like that anymore. I did get somebody out there last week, cut the yard. Like I said, I, I've already spoken with someone about dumpster rental. I was gonna start last week. I can't, you guys postponed the meeting last week I was here. So that's why I didn't do anything yet, because I didn't want to spend money, and then you guys said no.
So is the property is not secure then, right?
It's not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's all the questions, Ms. McKelvey. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that'll remain on the ordinance list for our vote next week. Next one up is 2614 Jones Avenue. Alice Butler, owner. Is anybody present on this one? Don't see any hands. 4212 7th Avenue, Winston Marchon, Jr., owner. Is anybody here? All right. The last one is 2928 10th Street. Ms. Palmore is here. If you would, give them your name and address and the status, Ms. Palmore.
Handheld might work better.
Good morning. My name is Audrey Holston Palmore. I am an heir to the property of 2928 10th Street. I am 67 years old, and when I came from the medical center, that was where I came, to Big Mama and Big Daddy Williams' home. I am here representing an heir by the name, a biol, she's not an heir, well, she was an heir, a biological child by the name of Marion Williams Holston. And I am concerned about the notation on the agenda that states I am an owner along with Robert Holston. There are three Robert Holstons that I am aware of. Robert Holston, my biological father. Robert Van Holston, who is my biological sibling. And Robert Jonathan Holston, who is my brother, Robert Van's son. According to what was told to me when they brought him and introduced me as Auntie Audrey. Now I'm wondering which Robert Holston will I be working with as the owner of 2928 10th Street? And I'd like that to be established, City Manager Faye. I'd like to know which Robert Holston will I be working with?
Mr. Pruitt, do you want to comment on the notices that have gone out?
Yes, so this property, as Ms. Palmore mentioned, is an heir property. So we were here in front of council about this time last year, about this same property. At that point, the property was still in the name of the individuals who have passed on. Right when we were discussing it, the, the will was probated. An attorney went through the probate and filed it. And at that time, you know, the property was transferred to all of the heirs, including Ms. Palmore and others. And so in those cases, you know, we do research, try to find out who the heirs are to notify, you know, all of them if we can. And so, you know, that's the process we followed in this case. And that's why, and again, I don't know why Ms. Palmore's name was listed first out of all the heirs that were, you know, listed on the deed. But her name was listed first, and her address was listed as the primary mailing address. That's why the tax bill goes to her, why all of our notices have gone to her.
May I interrupt?
No, wait just a second. The point is, all the heirs on whatever court documentation Mr. Pruitt had were notified. Is that right? Mr. Pruitt? Okay. Well, we're not here to debate who's an heir and who's not. He's following the court documents. Anybody else have a question?
No questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a meeting with you on May 21st of this year. And it was established through your verbal communication with me that all heirs must be in agreement with the sale of the property because it is an uninhabitable property located here in this fine city of Columbus, Georgia. And it is in need of a demolition. Because it's an eyesore for my community. I am a part of District Three, where Huff is the counselor. And I am very concerned. People in the community ask me, hey, girl, what you gonna do with that property? You know? Not even us want to see it in what is called District Three, the ghetto. But you know, the world is a ghetto. But let's get back to this. I'm concerned basically with establishing, I don't see the Robert Jonathan Holston here to confer with you all. I want to know who is Robert Holston owner? So that I'll know from which angle I must go in order to sell the property. Because I've had people ask me about buying the property, but I always keep it in mind that the administrator appointed by this government has told me, well, Audrey, you won't be able to sell that property without the consent of the heirs that are listed on the administrative deed of assets. There are four, four heirs. And I think the way you do not wanted to interrupt him is because I live very close near the property. And I ride down that street, if it's 365 days in a year, I ride by that street. And I look over there, and I think about how Big Mama and Big Daddy William loves me up in that property. They have brought me thus far. My grandmother would not allow me to go to the store without bringing her a receipt. And that's the way I am now. That's how I try to keep up with my finance, by having receipts that I, I can be accountable to myself and my spouse about how we're trying to deal with our finance. But that's just a little story about how dear that property is to me. And I cannot understand why the other heirs would not come together as I attempted to bring us together in city, on city property, down there, that public safety area where there's a community room, I reserved it two times. Then I found out about here in this building, there's another community room. I tried talking to the appointed administrative attorney representing Robert and Marion Holston, my dear beloved parents. And I asked the attorney that was appointed, could you set up a Zoom? You know, new technology. Could you set up a Zoom so we can get this thing together? Because the house is steadily deteriorating.
Ms. Holston, I apologize for interrupting, ma'am, but where we are today, as of right now, this is just an opportunity for council to determine if this moves forward for demolition. Now, if you have a reason that you can state fairly succinctly why it should not be demolished, and that you have some kind of commitment for funds or a deed signed, unless you have that, then, then.
Well, what about the citizens?
Allow me to finish.
Oh, yes, okay.
Until, until council votes to allow this to remain intact, it's going to move forward on demolition. So if you have some evidence of that, of why it shouldn't be, if you can go ahead and present that now, I'm sure council will consider that in their deliberation.
Okay, well, let's bring the citizens of Columbus, Georgia into this proposition. Now, I can sit outside 2928 on any day. Any citizen in Columbus, Georgia that want to bring me some falus and put it in the bucket before the second reading, I may possibly have collected enough money for William T. Miller not to be even thought of.
Well, you can do that.
That's a plan. Is that a plan?
That's not.
I said, is it a plan?
I'm just telling you that we need.
I'm asking you, does that sound like a plan? That, that can be enacted up on?
No, that's not a real good plan for.
It's not. You don't think the fine citizens of Columbus, Georgia would come by and say, well, you know, here go a dollar, baby? All the way up into second reading?
I'm gonna, I'm.
You don't want to go with that. Okay, let's go on with this.
Do you have anything that you want to bring up to council to let them?
Yes, I want council to know. I need to know who I am going to be working with, Mayor Henderson. I first need to establish that.
We're not.
Because, you know, if it's gonna be Robert Lee, oh, I communicate with Robert Lee all the time. They're my buddy.
Ms. Holston, we've got, we've got to kind of move on to the next property. So if you would relinquish the microphone and take your seat, and you need, you can come back next week, but you won't have an opportunity to speak unless you have made contact with Mr. Pruitt and made some kind of arrangements to be able to salvage this property. If that doesn't happen.
So, so I'm gonna start, I'm just telling the citizens in Columbus, Georgia, I'm gonna start, my plan is to sit out in front of the property. And I'm, I'm gonna try to get Channel Nine, Channel Three, Channel 38, bring me some dollar bills and put it in this bucket. And I'm gonna ask that there be security by Columbus finest watching me collect what I need to collect in order to let you all know that we have enough money for the preservation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
You can hand the microphone to Ms. Lindsay there. Thank you. Any action taken by council on that particular property?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That's all the properties listed on that item, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Kogle?
Mr. Pruitt, while we're on the topic of demolitions, I've had a couple of citizens reach out to me about a burned house that's on the corner. It's, it's on 16th Street between 13th and 14th Avenue. I actually think it's in Counselor Garrett's district, but it's a weird district lines. So I have some people in, in both neighborhoods reaching out. Could you give us an update on what the progress is on that? It's burned down about a year ago, and I think it's causing some health and safety issues in that part of the neighborhood.
Yes, so I am familiar with that particular property. I think it's 1344 16th, sounds right to me. So we have started the demolition process on that property. We originally, we're gonna try to consider it solid waste, which is what we do for properties that are really completely burned down, which allows us to move a lot quicker, to abate the nuisance. But after further review, it was determined that the demolition process was the appropriate avenue to take on that particular property. So we have started that process, gone through the first few steps. We do intend, if there's no action taken, that it would be on the next list that we bring to council, which should be probably in December, January timeframe. The family has been in contact with us. It is another heir property. They have hired an attorney to go through the probate court to get it in the heirs or in a single heirs name. And that individual has reached out to us. They have a contractor signed up to do the work. So as soon as the probate process is finished, they have indicated they will get the permits and start the demolition. If that, again, if all that does not happen, we will bring it to council the next time we have, have a list.
Okay, so planning on, in December-ish?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Continue down our list, Mayor. The.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Counselor Davis?
Director Pruitt, got a question for you. What, what happens or what can be done, what remedies are there if a property, let's just say in this case, burned down? And it's endangering, it's an extreme danger to the citizens of Columbus and somebody can get hurt. What, what remedies do we have or what can be done in a situation like that?
So there are, you know, provisions in the, the ordinance. You know, if it is an imminent danger, you know, if it's a direct threat to public health, you know, that was the process we followed with the properties on Broadway that, you know, were an immediate danger to falling into the public right of way. You know, there are situations like that that can be evaluated, you know, in coordination with my office and the city attorney. You know, if we declared it an immediate hazard, then, you know, we can skip some of the due process that, you know, we normally follow to go in and take it out. And again, with burnt houses especially, you know, if it, if it's a pile of rubble, that's now solid waste, which allows us, you know, to mail a letter, wait 10 days, and then go clean it up. So we do, we have gotten a lot more aggressive following that process in the last couple of years to try to get some of these issues resolved as quickly as we can.
Well, unfortunately, there was a church that burnt down up on Veterans Parkway. You know the one I'm talking about. Can you get some of your inspectors to go by there and take a look at that? It, I think there's some, it's, it's a dangerous situation for children, for many, many people, anybody going through there. And there's a lot of debris that needs to come down on the ground, or else it's gonna fall or potentially fall on somebody and hurt somebody. Can you get some inspectors to go by there and take a look at that?
Yes, sir. I know we have already started a case on that property, but I will personally go take a look and see if there's other actions we can take.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
Just, just one further follow-up question, because I know that I'm gonna get some questions on it from the citizens. What is the, if somebody pulls a permit, what is the timeline that they have in order to show forward movement? Like, anybody could just pull a permit and decide that it kind of just stops the process? Like anybody could just pull a permit and decide that it kind of just stops the process? And then we end up just kind of dragging our feet?
So in the, in the past, especially when funding was a challenge, if a permit was issued, the department would kind of cease all enforcement activities on it under the assumption that the owner was going to do the repairs. You know, how, a permit's a step in the process, but a permit doesn't stop us moving forward anymore. So you, again, if you're actually out there physically working on the property, doing the demolition or making repairs to it, that's what's going to stop us from moving forward. But, you know, if that, like that one property we just talked about, for example, if they pulled a permit in November, but they didn't start work by the time we got around to December to bring it to counsel, we would still bring it to counsel. And say, you know, they haven't, they've pulled a permit, but they haven't started work and we think it's time to move on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, got all the questions. We'll move on to the special exception request for seventy-seven oh-one River Road. This is a.
Ms. Elamene?
Yes.
Oh, you want to speak on the demolitions?
I'll look here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this on the demolition item?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, on the demolition. Officer Ziegler provided a list of approximately a hundred and fifty properties on the demolition list. That's a lot. And I'm trying to understand why some of the properties, which number three, a significant number of them are in East Winton, the historic neighborhood. And I'm wondering why would you demolish homes that could be repaired or renovated for use? Are all of these properties on the demolition list like some of the properties here? Some people didn't show up to fight for their properties. And Ms. Powell Moore, that property looks ready for demolition. But I'm very concerned about the issue of housing. And why tear down structures that might be usable? And as I drive through East Winton and look at some of these properties on Lawyer's Lane and other places, I question whether they should be demolished. And I think it would be responsible on your part as our elected officials that these properties that are in your districts, you take a look at them and see if they could possibly be used and rehabbed to provide housing for some of the unhoused in the community. That's my point on speaking on this issue of demolitions. It's a whole, whole lot of properties on the demolition list. So why are only just a few done? Is it a budgetary issue? I wish somebody would clarify that and I'll try to get in touch with you, number three, to see if you'll call me back so you can help me understand what you can do for District Three and all these properties that are on the demolition list in District Three. That's what I want to know. What can you do? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes. Counselor Huff?
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Elamene, I'd be happy to speak with you soon. It is a budgetary matter as far as what we can do and what we can't do. And also it's a matter of finding people who are interested in investing monies into the properties to rehab those, to bring them back to good use in the area. So we'll sit down and have that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're still on demolition. Mr. Pruitt, at the corner of Pierce and R.C. Allen. I think it's over off North Stair Drive, there's a burnt out property there. Have y'all, you been out to investigate that and take a look at that?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I can look into it and let you know.
Okay, if you would, please do that for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Hang on, hang on, your light's not on. There you go. Should work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Pruitt, if you don't mind, can you explain the entire demolition process? Just to make sure that the public understands. You know, I know we have a lot of properties that are sitting, that's unattended. But I think there may be some type of threshold as far as giving the owner time to make repairs and things of that nature. Can you just kind of explain the entire process, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. So the demolition process is established in Chapter Eight of the city's ordinances. So the first thing to remember is that all of these are private property. So the city does not own any of these properties. We do not take ownership of it. Even after we demolish it, you know, we put a lien on the property, but the city never owns these properties. So they're not our properties. And taxpayer money, you know, cannot be used to improve a property. It can be used to remove a nuisance from a neighborhood. So that's in a blank. So that's what the demolition process outlines. So for a structure to be eligible for demolition under our ordinances, the cost to repair that structure has to be fifty percent or more than the value of a structure. So if you have a value, the tax assessor says that the home's worth a hundred thousand dollars. You know, it's going to take fifty thousand plus a dollar to fix that. That would mean it would be eligible for the demolition list. So once it's on the demolition list, there's a process again in the ordinance. The first step is a demolition hearing that is conducted with me and my staff. After that hearing, it's determined that the property is still eligible. You know, for demolition, there wasn't any evidence that, you know, we made a mistake or, you know, an error or anything like that. The owner's given, you know, time to fix it. If they fail to fix it, then it becomes eligible to come before counsel for your consideration. So part of the time length is some of these complicated properties that have heirs. You know, there's a lot of effort that goes into trying to find all of them, you know, finding any lien holder, anybody with a mortgage on it, on the property. You know, there's research done and notifications sent. So that's a lot of the times what the challenge is, is finding all those people, making sure that they receive proper notification going forward. So we do have approximately a hundred and fifty, and it is a rolling list. So generally we add, you know, fifty to sixty properties every year. And generally there's about fifty to sixty that come off every year. So our current funding level, we can demolish approximately thirty properties, the city can every year. And so we try to expend all of our funding in the course of a fiscal year. So generally we bring, you know, three or four lists of, you know, eight to ten properties to, until we spend that money. And then we have seen since we have received additional funding in the last seven, eight years or so. You know, we have seen a greater response from private, private property owners than previously. So now when people are getting our letters, they are more apt to take action themselves. You know, but that's kind of how the process works.
So once that property is demolished, is there a lien put on the property?
Yes, sir.
And then the lien, I mean, so technically the owner is responsible for fulfilling the expenses that we've.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And generally, I would say a large majority of our demolition properties, you know, already have tax liens that are there too. So really, you know, there could be tax liens, the demolition liens, you know, if we had to go out and cut the grass, those will be liens on the property as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, perhaps it may be time in the near future to circle back and maybe talk with some of our partners or land bank. Land Bank Authority or the Tax Commissioner and even maybe look at updating, reexamining some of our ordinances and where we're at. And I, I think right now we tend to take these demolitions and put them on as liens. But the question is, can we, is there a legal process that there are probably landowners that I know, I know of a couple that are quite capable of paying for the demolition to cover in these liens? Paying property taxes, they don't for whatever reason, and it ties up the process for a long, long, long time. It's just kind of like, you know, I'm just gonna fight this thing out with you. But maybe finding way, and I don't know if we currently can do that, that would be the question. If we can hold people who have the capability of paying those demolition costs. If we can hold them responsible and collect that money versus just tying it to a lien and it just sits there forever. And then we got to start up keeping the properties. Have those discussions, look at where we're at with a lot of the land that, properties that I think it was talked about earlier, I've seen a document floating around with all the properties that are out there. Maybe relook at those, see where we're at. Our relationships with other, the Housing Authority or Naval Works and people like that to see where we're at. For getting them back on the tax roads, if we're updating these properties, turn them into something valued. The, the last question I want to ask. These demolitions you bring us on the list, do it, is all the property owners or the people involved here, are they current on their property taxes? Are they paying their property taxes or are they just leave it delinquent and it just keeps adding up until they sell the property? Does your department look at that? And I never see it in the notes or anything like that, but, you know, that would be a question of all these people that, that have come before us. Whether today or in the past, are they current on their property taxes? Are they paying their property taxes or do they just let that become a lien on the property as well? Can you answer that specifically?
Yes, I would say, I don't have an exact number, but if we have a hundred and fifty properties currently on our demolition list, a vast majority of those are also tax delinquent is our experience. So we see generally, you know, we see it and it's a very clear trend. You know, once the taxes stop being paid, you know, the grass starts growing. And then a couple of years after that, it gets on our demolition list and then we bring it forward. So I would say that that is a trend, you know, if the taxes are current, generally the owner will take care of the demolition because they don't want that lien to go on the property as well. So, but I would say a vast majority are tax delinquent.
These, the ones that you brought us today, for example?
Yeah, I would have to go.
Are they all current?
I'd have to go look and confirm on that. You know, I know the commercial property on Victory Drive that we talked about is, I know that for a fact is current. But I'd have to go double check the residential.
Well, I would like to see that in our reports from now on because that, that is a key point in what decision we make up here. And we don't talk about it, but if that's an underlying fact, then, and somebody's asking for grace, then it's, it just, it's not matching up. So I would like to see that on report to have that information to know. So if somebody comes up here and tells us one thing, but in reality, it's a little worse than what's anticipating on the obligations and we, we need to know that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt is, well, I'm sorry, Counselor Hickey?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for Tim. Just one last question. You explained the process to us a moment ago upon the request of Councilman Chambers. I just got one question. You said that when it comes to you all, what's the time limit between you having a hearing with that land, with that property owner? That you give them to proceed and get, get the property taken care of?
So the, the, the minimum timeframe is forty-five days to start repairs. And again, we do have some discretion, you know, if an owner comes with us, you know, with a contract that, you know, hey, and funding will be available in ninety days and they present that to us at the hearing, you know, we can extend that timeframe on a case by case basis.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, one last thing. You know, once you meet with these landlords and they, you know, say, okay, can you give me thirty days, forty-five days? We, we probably need to put a stipulation in place where they need to make sure they at least keep the grass cut, keep the windows secured. Because some of these properties that I've seen, I mean, you know, the last thing you want is squatters and you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
You have to think about your neighbors, you know, and, and, and so we just need to make sure that we, you know, hold, hold them accountable. They at least make sure that they at least try to maintain and make it presentable until construction can start.
Yes, sir. And we have that conversation, you know, with any property owner that we understand. A demolition or a renovation on the, the scale of these properties takes some time, but at least we can do the easy stuff. You know, we can keep it clean, keep the trash up, keep the grass cut. So that is our expectation as well.
All right.
Got all the questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item on our list is the special exception use request for seventy-seven oh-one River Road.
There's a motion in a second. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share a few words on this request, on this resolution. First of all, I want to let, just let people know that when, when a church comes to us to, to, well, actually they don't really have to come to us if it's under two hundred and fifty seats. Church can go in, there's no zoning requirements or classification. They can go anywhere they want to in Muskogee County. Now, if it's over two hundred and fifty, then they have to come to us and talk to us a little bit more about it. The church here that is, that I've been working with, the Church of the Highlands, they, they're going to add roughly seven hundred and fifty more seats. So therefore it has to go through a process. It's been double approved by our staff and the planning department. But I want to, Mayor, I want to say that this is kind of unique and I want to spell that out for the record because this is somewhat, it's not really a planned development, but in my eyes, it somewhat is. And then the location, the geographical location with our landfill right next to it and some existing commercial that's been there forever. And, and some of the owners, the property owners are all, I've talked with them in, in detail and, and they're okay with it. That surround the property, there are, I will admit, you know, there are some people that have reservations and are really concerned. And probably, you know, there's going to be people that just are not going to be in agreement with that. And I respect that and they have their valid reasons. One of the things though that, that I look at here is this is just not a, it's a uniqueness. I'm looking at it as a, it, it, it would be classified as a church, but it's somewhat not. It's somewhat like a event meeting place. But there is a, an estate, a large acre estate lot, Mr. Wright Wade's involved with it. And the property owners who are involved with it, they're actually going to build their houses there. And it's going to be attached right next to it. There's going to be a nice subdivision, large estate lot subdivision, which the owner himself is going to build a pretty nice home and some of the family members. I think the property owner that sold it, I'm, I'm, hope I'm accurate on this, even retained a lot. He's going to build a home there. So there's going to be some nice homes all around this property. I, I wanted to highlight that in working with the church and, and I'm extremely grateful and it means a lot. Kind of like Counselor Allen said earlier about working with applicants that come in. You know, we see some of them don't want to work with you, some of them do, some of them go the extra mile. And whenever they go the extra mile, it means a lot and certainly it, it, it helps go towards decision-making as well. I want to really commend and I really appreciate, Mr. Bruce Adams is here who's representing the Church of the Highlands, Mr. Wright Wade's here who's representing the subdivision right next to it and they're working together. I really want to just highlight their willingness. There's twenty-two, I've got twenty-two conditions on here. There's twenty-two conditions here and we've worked through this for several weeks now, months to try to get to this point. And it's just been a joy sitting down and working and they understand. These people and the congregation, they want to be good neighbors. They want to be good friends. They want to work with everybody and they want to go the extra mile and do what it takes to, to put a smile on everybody's face. And that may or may not happen. I'm hoping at the end of the day it will, but they have done some, they have committed to some great things here. The, the upgrades and the landscaping is just significant. And the cali, for example, the caliber of the cannabis. is just significant, and the cali, for example, the caliber of the canobial trees and the things they're doing. I'm not gonna go down through all these conditions, but I do wanna say that that means a lot to me, and I wanna thank them publicly for being, it was pretty much an easy process in putting it out there, and, and I may have missed some things, I hope I didn't, but I, I just wanted to highlight that, Mayor, is, it's great, and the, 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 I guess the church is headquartered out of Birmingham, and these folks, Mr. Adams is from Birmingham, these folks are from out of town, but yet they're willing to do these things, and you know, you, you were a former council member, you, you, you've been through this, to do something like this is, is just, just a good thing. It's a good thing to be able to work with people like that. I, I wanted to, to highlight that. So thank you, and I'm finished, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, well, we have a motion and a second to approve the special exception. Any other comments? All right, if you would, put it on the screen, and Counsel, you can enter your votes. Were we able to get it on the screen? All in favor of that motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved. Mr. Wade, thanks, sir. Thank y'all for working with the folks out there.
Thanks, sir, that is approved. The last formal item we have listed, Mayor, is to approve a FAA grant.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that item? All right, let's try to put that on the screen, see if we can get that working. Yeah, if you would, please register your votes.
This for improvements at Taxi Way D at the airport. That's approved. Mayor, that's all the business items. We do need a short executive session for litigation discussion. That's all we've got.
Okay. All right, we'll move into the public agenda. The first, and I'll remind you, you'll have five minutes. At the end of five minutes, even if you're not finished, I'll ask you to take your seat, just to be respectful for those others that are lined up to speak. If you can't get your message across in five minutes, you can have three additional minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. So we'll, we'll start now with Dr. Natalie Nicole, representing Role Model Academy, requesting measurable accountability to ensure residents receive reliable results. Welcome. State your name and address, or just city of residence.
Good morning, Dr. Natalie Nicole, Role Model Academy, at 1228 24th Street, Columbus, Georgia, 31901. I wanna say thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and in reference to the topic that you just mentioned, sir. It's not optional for us to pay taxes, we're obligated to do that, and every resident and business contributes to the taxes that fund our city. Yet, when we ask about certain services, we often hear phrases like, we're tired, we're overworked, we're doing the best we can. What does that really mean for a taxpayer funding the departments here in the city? Now, I have an HR background. As a non-commissioned officer, we received NCORs. Basically, what that was, was a formal record of performance and potential. The reports were used for promotion, assignment, retention, and professional development. They ensured accountability by tying evaluations to clearly defined standards. Later, as a civilian supervisor, we use SMART goals within our employee performance management appraisal program, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound scores that established at the beginning the standard, the duties of performance tied to the mission and organizational goals and outcomes. My question is, does the city of Columbus have these measurements in place for the agents who serve our citizens? If not, can we take steps to implement them so we're not evaluating effort but outcomes and results? In closing, accountability is not about criticism, it's about alignment. Taxpayer dollars already fund and contribute to our city services. What we need now is measurable accountability to ensure that every resident in every neighborhood receives reliable results for their investment, and I wanna thank you for your time and commitment to all of the people of Columbus, Georgia. I would like, if I'm not sure who could answer, whenever, to know if our agents, our city's service, public servants, receive any form of evaluations or standards for them to achieve or live up to. Just being in business, as a new business owner here in Columbus, Georgia, in District 31901, it has been a challenge. I called an office multiple times, left voicemails. At one point, I thought, well, maybe I have a number to an office that's not, no one works there. But in fact, someone did work there. In fact, they never returned my phone calls, they never responded. And so I'm just wondering, is there any form of measurement as it regards evaluations for our city employees, that as a citizen, we don't have to endure this type of professionalism? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy City Manager, you wanna say?
So I will respond to your question. The city does have an evaluation process, it is not a requirement. It is encouraged for departments to evaluate all their employees every year through an evaluation process. And if you would provide the information of who you tried to contact, we'll address that issue. So I'll ask Danielle to get with you, and we'll, we'll resolve that issue.
Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy City Manager Hodge, you said that, that the requirements, the performance evaluation is, is, do you mean that is optional? Or can you explain that a little further for me?
Yes, we do not have a required evaluation process that's done for every employee, but they are encouraged to evaluate their employees each year, either through a formal process or an informal process.
Okay, well, I would.
Now, a lot of departments do utilize the evaluation process, but is, has not been a requirement. Evaluations are not tied to pay, we do not have a pay for performance, and so not all departments utilize the evaluation, the formal evaluation process.
So, so the policy is, is, is optional for them to evaluate their, their employees? Okay, and is that, is that, does that option, is that option across the board with all different entities, for example, public safety? Is that, is that the same, that they have an option there to, to evaluate?
I, I cannot respond to public safety if that's optional for them.
You're speaking in terms of general, you're speaking in terms of general government?
That's right.
And, and the reason I bring that up is because the 30 years that I've worked, it was mandatory that we got, got evaluated. And, and this is what I'm trying to understand, why is it that, you know, our city government, we have what appears to be one set of rules, working in one area when it comes to these evaluations, then in the other, it's optional? I think what we need to do is have something clearly across the board for all city employees, that we need to have a policy in place where everybody receives a performance evaluation. And I think that would help fix the problem that our city, Mrs., I forgot her name, but the young, yeah, Dr. Natalie, who just came up, that, that would help fix that problem, that we have something in place, because if people are not being evaluated, then that means that they, it's so easy then to go lacking in what they're supposed to do. And, and that just, you know, that's so strange to me, because like I said, for over 30 years, you know, we received a performance evaluation, you know, and we was held to a high standard. And I think if you got that in place, it, it will, it will, you know, help people to do what they're supposed to be doing, you know, so I don't know what, what we will need to do as a council, or as, you know, I don't know whether to fall on the mayor, or, you know, but, you know, a policy, I think, we need, we need, we need to take a serious look at that, having a policy in place to make sure that everybody across this government is being, receiving performance evaluations, and we're holding people accountable for, for, for their jobs and the things they're supposed to be doing, because if they're not performing like they're supposed to, then we need to be talking about, you know, possibly replacing people, and getting people in that's gonna do the job and do it the right way.
And I don't wanna give the impression that we do not hold employees accountable. They're held accountable. What I'm saying is, it's not a mandatory requirement to do a formal evaluation process, but employees are held accountable.
Well, well, Deputy Hodge, I, I will, I will have to say, if there is a performance evaluation in place, it holds people accountable, because now you got a report card that you can check off boxes, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, you can check it off. If they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you can check it off. I think we need something in place.
And we can bring something back.
Okay, okay, yeah, and that's where I'll write.
To Deputy City Manager Hodge's point, the, the evaluations are done, it's just what, what they're not using is there's no standardized form, I don't think, they've recommended that they use a form that you can access on the HR site. But I think everybody does those evaluations, they just may not use that form, they may use a more informal way depending on the, depending on the situation, but we can bring that back.
Yeah, let's bring something back, that would be clear across the board for everybody, and then that way, it won't be no question then about whether they're being evaluated or not.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Chambers?
Yes, to add to that, you know, I, I do think we need a, a, be consistent across the board. You know, typically, you, you develop your goals at the beginning of the year and mid-year, you sit down and have that dialogue with the employee or team member, just to kinda gauge whether you're on the right track. Then at the end of the year, you decide, you know, well, did you meet your goal, or did you not meet your goal? And that is how you receive your, your performance incentive or, or et cetera. I do believe that we probably need to do something consistent across the board, and not allow departments to be able to exercise their discretion, whether they want to have an evaluation system in place. So I think we probably need to get HR involved and sit down and see if we can come up with something consistent across the board. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Kogle?
Ms. Hodge, does the, do the directors have a formal evaluation as well? Or is it across the board, like all of our employees?
So everyone is evaluated, whether it's on a evaluation form or not? I mean, different department directors handle evaluate, evaluating employees differently. There is on the HR's website for city access, there is a process of an evaluation form that not everyone uses. And what I'm hearing from counsel is, we need to put something in place that everyone is required to use the same evaluation process for every employee every year.
Sure. While we're, while we're bringing that, can we make that a two-way street, where it's the, the employees also have the opportunity to evaluate their directors, just so that we can create a, I, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a, a good, like a negative or an incentive thing, but just to be able to give our directors some feedback on what they're doing right within their, within their department, and, and then it will also give counsel and also give your department some feedback as well. But if we can set that up, if we're looking at this, let's just make it a two-way street, let's, let's make it a, a good environment to work on, and a good environment to work in. So I'd like to see that as well.
There is a program, 360 peer review, that you can use, but it's typically not done every year. We can, we can do it just to kinda do an assessment of where we are, and then every couple of years after that, we can, we can check on that.
And we'll, we'll take this as a referral for the HR department to respond to.
Counselor Chambers?
And this is my last comment. We probably, I, I would be curious to see what type of HRIS system that we're utilizing. So if we can ask HR about that as well, because the HRIS system allows us to, it comes with so many bells and whistles, it has a performance management system, and that will allow us to be consistent across the board if everybody is utilizing the HRIS system. All right, thank you.
And there, there is a system, and we'll have the HR department come and provide an update on that.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Hickey?
Just one other thing, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Can that happen during, we got a work session coming up, right, on the 30th?
We may be able to, we may be able to pull something.
Squeeze that in, you know, during that work.
Or at least give an update.
Give an update on.
And then we can initiate the, the, what, it will may be a longer discussion.
Awesome, sounds great. Thanks very much.
Thanks, sir. All right. Next is Reverend James Clements, representing the IMA. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I am James Clements, pastor of St. James CM Church here in Columbus, ready North Star Drive, Columbus 31907. And today I stand on behalf of the Inter-Denominational Ministerial Alliance. I'm addressing this morning criminalization of the homeless population. And if I may draw your attention, just to my rear stands a huge, beautiful billboard on Macon Road that says, Columbus voted the most welcoming community in the nation. Let that resonate for a moment. Both nationally, and I'll read this morning for the sake of brevity and clarity and time, both nationally and within our local community, legislation continues to be enacted that penalizes essential acts of survival, such as sleeping outdoors, resting in public spaces, or seeking shelter. These ordinances do not result homelessness, rather they serve to penalize poverty and erode the dignity of affected individuals. Our moral compass should be challenged each time that we are faced with those who were once productive in our community, some of whom we even matriculated with, who have fallen on hard times, and ask the question, do they deserve to be where they are, or deserve the treatment of having their hands handcuffed as opposed to a hand up for help? From a pastoral perspective, it's essential to recognize the scriptural precedent found in Luke 9:58, which notes, foxes have dens and birds have nests, but the son of man has no place to lay his head. This passage underscores that Christ himself experienced homelessness. Consequently, punitive measures against the homeless equate to actions against those who Christ identified with most closely, and that a nation often regarded for its prosperity and opportunities, a shortfall remains in supporting our most vulnerable citizens. Matthew 25, 35 through 40 further emphasizes the importance of caring for those in need, indicating by serving others, we serve Christ, and conversely, ignoring or punishing the vulnerable is tattamut to neglecting this fundamental calling. I encourage fellow Christians to reflect on these teachings and consider how best to embody compassion within our current contexts. Criminalizing homelessness imposes financial burdens on the cities, strains judicial and correctional resources, and fails to address the underlying causes of homeless and housing insecurity. When accounting for the out-of-service time required for a patrol officer to effect an arrest of a homeless person, including, including the procedures involved in the process of securing and registering the personal property of a homeless individual, there's a corresponding reduction in the time available for neighborhood patrols, community policing, and traffic enforcement. Research consistently demonstrates that approaches such as supportive housing, mental health care, and employment programs are more cost-effective and promote human dignity. Again, I direct your attention to that sign, to see, are we really welcoming to the homeless population, or are we catering to those? Are we catering to those who have? I re- respectfully urge you as local policymakers to reconsider punitive ordinances in favor of comprehensive solutions, including housing, accessible shelters, robust mental health services, and effective reentry initiatives. Such measures align with both the public interest and ethical and spiritual responsibility. Thank you for your attention and consideration of policies that foster more compassionate and constructive approach.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Pastor Clements, uh, we, you know, I appreciate, you know, your, your, your comments and everything and, but I, I, we passed an ordinance that said that we, we was not gonna criminalize, uh, homelessness.
I think it was after eight days.
No, 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 the eight days was in, in place to, to, uh, give that, the, the unit that goes out to these encamp areas, it was put in place to, to give them a little more time to find a location for them. And then the eight days also, uh, wasn't, uh, it said up to eight days. So if it takes longer, they'll be able to, you know, do it, they, yeah, it was, it was a minimum of eight days. So if, if it would take longer, then they would still be able to have that time to find placement. And I just want to be clear, uh, about when I spoke to, uh, Sergeant Williams, uh, that heads up that unit, uh, she made it clear to me that there's not, their, their intention when they go out to encamp areas is not to put people in jail. Uh, if you have someone with outstanding warrants who have, uh, migrated to, to Columbus, Georgia, and they're homeless, and they, they're wanted in another s- city in Georgia or another state, uh, for whatever crime that they're wanted for, the police has no choice but to, uh, uh, execute that outstanding warrant for that person. If they're homeless, if they're here and don't have a place to go. If, if, that if, when they, when they run what we call a ten-eighty-eight on them, and their name comes back in the system as wanted somewhere else, the police just can't let them go. They, they got to follow through with that process. Now, if, if a police, if this unit arrived on the scene and you got somebody that's homeless, that they're trying to provide help to, and this person attacks the police, that's a charge. They have no choice but to follow through. But if people are compliant and doing what they're supposed to be doing and things, uh, uh, the police is there from what, according to the ordinance that we, we passed, the police is there to help. And I know Sergeant William is a very compassionate person, who, who, who loves what she's doing, and she's gonna do it the right way. And, and, uh, so as far as this body having something in place that criminalizes homelessness, we didn't do that, because I was one that wasn't gonna, they wouldn't have got my vote for that. Because that's not what we need to be doing. We need to be helping people. But I know under those two circumstances, you could possibly, a person will be incarcerated if they're wanted on outstanding warrant. And then number two, if you turn violent towards the police, then that in itself is a charge. You know, it could be, be aggravated assault against a police officer. It could be as a, a minimum charge as obstruction of a police officer, you know? But at the end of the day, the goal is not for our police department to go out and arrest people. I just want to make that clear to the public. That is not the goal of the Columbus Police Department when it comes to homelessness. And we've been assured that, this council has been assured that that is not the case. Because the ordinance just allows, it's a minimum of eight days. Then if it takes longer, then they can have longer, i- i- if it's sixteen days, to find somebody help, to get them where they need to be. So I just want to just clear that up for the record, so it won't be no misunderstanding.
Pastor and I, this is gonna sound terribly rude, but you, you've already had your five minutes. You can respond to a direct question.
I had a minute and forty-one seconds.
But other, well, I've got you at zero. So, but if anybody has a question for you, you can come back in, or you can come up, uh, for the, your three minutes. Counselor Huff?
Pastor Clements? I just wanted to take time to welcome you to Columbus.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, appreciate you being boots on the ground. You just got here.
Just got here.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't able to attend your reception, but I was, uh, told about it. I was working at the time. So just wanted to let your family know, we're glad to have you here and glad to see you up and running and working right away.
Thank you.
Anything I can do to help, let me know. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, a quick request, um, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, um, how can I get a list of all city-owned properties that are not occupied?
Have to get that, I guess, through the tax, um, assessor.
Okay.
But, yeah. I think that's, I think that's about the only way I, I know to get it.
The city-owned properties that are not occupied, that the city owns.
Count?
Okay.
All right, let's see. Deputy City Manager Hodge?
I was just gonna say, we have a list of city-owned properties, but it's not, um, designated whether it's occupied or unoccupied. Are you asking for city-owned property?
City-owned properties that are not occupied.
Occupied. We can, we can work on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Garrett?
Deputy City Manager Hodge, do we have a way of getting access to our available Section Eight housing? So we can see, you know, where we stand as far as availability of properties? You know, if we need to refer somebody who's homeless to, you know, get a voucher?
Do you check on that?
Okay.
I'm sure there's a way.
If we, if we could get that, it'd be nice just for us to have an idea of, you know, how much available property do we have right now that's already government subsidized?
Does the housing authority have that information?
I, I need to check on that.
I mean, it could also be individual property owners too that, you know, have Section Eight rentals. I just want to see where we are on the market and what's available. Thanks.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. From my understanding, um, as a property manager, so the properties that I manage, if they're, if somebody wants to come in with a voucher, then we would have to go to the housing authority. Housing authority would have to inspect our property to, to, and approve it. So it's a floating number. Because, you know, any property that's being managed or any property that an owner has that wants to, um, be put on the Section Eight housing list, they would have to go through that process to get it on the list. But there's, there might be properties out there right now that are not approved for Section Eight housing, but could be approved for Section Eight housing if the owner so chose.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next is, um, Ms. Teresa Elamine, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'll start with, uh, the topic of strategies for housing beyond house, since that seems to be the topic of the day. The housing authority, uh, put out a notice on availability of Section Eight, and they had to shut it down in a day because the demand was so great. Uh, there's not enough housing. I sent a list to you, uh, of twenty-one pages of acres upon acres of land that the Columbus Consolidated Government owns. Uh, I think I sent it late last night, uh, in an email. Uh, but thanks to Ms. Knowles in the tax assessor's office, when she explained, and I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, I did get the records that I requested. Uh, so that called to the state attorney, I'll tell them, never mind. Um, so, um, I appreciate it. Um, 'cause my experience with the way this government operates is one of the best-run cities I've ever known, the clerk of council, the city attorney, uh, the deputy city managers. This is a greatly-run government. Uh, and I'm glad to say that Ms. Knowles in the tax assessor's office described each of those columns to me in the records I received. I still need to study them. Uh, but I do want to say that strategies, uh, for housing, the unhoused, are numerous. I sent you a news clip of the Cleveland, Ohio strategy. I lived in Cleveland for five years, so I know that city. And Columbus is way better than Cleveland on the question of ministries. They have a program where the community joined with the city to say, I'm in ministry. Do you hear me pastors? I'm so grateful for Reverend Clements because Cleveland started housing the unhoused, and they met their objectives in a very short time because the people in ministry were willing to do that. There are numerous, um, possibilities for community engagement on housing the unhoused. And you own a lot of property. The city of Raleigh ran out of property years ago. It's the third fastest-growing city in the country. They annexed eleven thousand acres in the county in order to build affordable housing for all the millennials coming there for jobs and building that great city. I will need the other three minutes, 'cause I do want to talk about why we don't need a mega jail. But I am in support of Pat Fray and her efforts for community engagement. But we don't have to wait to get thirty-five thousand dollars. We can engage the community right now. And I will do my best in this election season coming up to hold you all accountable. One, three, five, seven, nine, who's running for that? And the mayor's office. You should all be held accountable for mistreating people and violating their human rights, number one. It's a human right to have housing. You're not treating anybody nice by not arresting them when you don't provide them with housing. That's what the game is right now. Provide them with housing. Don't arrest them. Don't have them living in squalor, in camp, encampments. You give them houses. You give them shelter. That's what the name of this problem should be. Not about whether or not you're arresting them, but providing housing. And I will come back to talk about why we don't need a mega jail. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Mr. Val McGowan regarding Section Eight housing. Welcome, Mr. McGowan.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm sorry about the title that they put in, because I did not say Section Eight housing. I said affordable housing. So, uh, whoever made the
State your name in your address to start off.
Uh, Val McGowan, uh, I live at, uh, sixty fifty-nine Walters Loop here in Columbus, Georgia. Since two thousand and four, I just moved back. Skip, Mr. Huff, Mr. Davis, Mr. Hickey, Mr. Fay, I'm back. How you guys been?
Doing well.
Uh, the houses that you guys are building over on the seven hundred block of Moy Road is unsafe. They're sitting, when you park a car, the car ends up being on the right of way. You took a one acre, slightly under one acre, and you divided it up, and you're now putting two houses there. You brought in some dirt to build them on, did not compact it. There's no city ordinance for compacting. So there's no way to know how this outcome is going to be. Um, considerably smaller homes, they're gonna affect our home values. I don't mind that as much as the fact that the ordinance is allowing them to build it. What kind of ordinance are we having that you can divide something up, bring in a little bit of dirt, don't even compact it, and then put up two shotgun houses? You're putting up two-bedroom, one-bath houses in a community that has four-bedroom, three baths. Shame on all of you. Shame on you. I can't stop you, but you guys can stop it. These people don't pay taxes. They're coming in and they're building. Yes, we gotta find somewhere for everyone to live. But let's build where it doesn't affect your neighbor. We're worried about the homeless, that's good. We need to do something for the homeless. But what about the people that's trying to help take care of the homeless? Let's not damage them in the process. I don't understand how we got here. I just moved back. I wanted to move back here. All of you are good people. I've seen all of you guys over many, many years, twenty-five to be exact. We can do better. Let's find out how we can fix what's going on on Moy Road. Let's make sure at least that what's there, that they're doing, is gonna be done to the best that they can do. They're throwing it up with, with no disregard. I've sent you pictures. You've seen the cars where it's gonna be right on the road. We can never put sidewalks now there, never. Nothing can be built in the future as far as sidewalks. That's a community, sidewalks. What are we doing for the future? We're just gonna put ourselves on top of each other like the people in New York? Maybe that's why I should have moved. Maybe I would have had more say-so. I don't know. But this is, it's a great disguise. What, what are we gonna do, ma'ams? What are we gonna do? Can you guys at least come out and take a look? I've been paying taxes a little while. That's the only thing I'm asking you for. That's all I'm asking you for. Come out, take a look at what's going on, and let's make it the best that we can make it before this guy gets out of here. And if anything else is coming down the road, at least let us know about it. Let's make sure that we get the same thing that is happening in Mr. Davis's neighborhood. That the builder's working with the community to make sure that it's the best that they can be done under our ordinance. These people don't pay taxes here. They build and they leave. And the person that's got to fix it is the guy that buys it that don't know no better. Who's gonna educate them? Who's gonna protect them? I gotta take care of my fellow man. He's gonna be my neighbor. Who's gonna help him fix that piece of land that's got a drop-off down there? That nobody ever wanted to build on for twenty-five years? The city's not. They're gonna say, well, you bought it. Just like when I came twenty-five years ago and I had the water problem. Well, you bought it, Mr. McGowan. But you guys sell it to each individual developer after you see the master plan. You got a safeguard against that. Can y'all at least come out, do something? That's all I'm asking you. Take a little bit of your time, drive down the seven hundred block of Moy Road, see the two little houses, and see if you think they're safe.
McGowan, time's up, sir.
Thank you.
You want, you want, you want your three minutes at the end?
No, 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 I actually got a document that I was rushing over here, but I appreciate you guys.
Welcome back. Thank you.
And I thank you guys.
Yes, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Counselor Tucker, she wanted me to submit this referral. She's saying that Moya Estates will hold an HOA meeting on October seventeenth at six thirty P.M. And Counselor Tucker is requesting representatives from the Planning and Inspections and Code Departments to be in attendance to address the concerns expressed today and also concerning other projects.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Protect this referral. Protect this referral.
Yes, sir.
There'll be a meeting, and Counselor Tucker has asked the clerk to share that, so she'll tell you right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Moy Estates will hold an HOA meeting on October 17th at 6:30 PM, and Counselor Tucker has requested that representatives from our Planning and Inspections and Code Departments to be in attendance to address this concern and also regarding other projects.
And I just want to put this to all of you guys. They already have come out. I've already addressed it with them. They are building within code. Yeah, yeah. But I would expect, hopefully, if y'all can show whoever, that would be great also. So y'all can hear the same thing we are. Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy City Manager. I'm, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm sorry you didn't sign up on public agenda. I apologize. Thank you, ma'am. Deputy City Manager, Hodge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. On the city manager's agenda, item number one is a contract extension for the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau. This relates to the hotel motel tax. The CCVB is designated as the destination marketing organization for Columbus. We've.
There's a motion to approve, and I know we've got the chair of the CVB and the president of the CVB in the audience if you want to hear from them. Counselor Crabbe.
I was just going to give the opportunity to Ashley and to Pace Halter to come up and speak to us about this. I am one that would like to, I don't want to just rubber stamp and extend a contract without looking it over because we do have new leadership at the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I have spoken with Ashley, and she is, you know, wanting to take that organization in new areas. And so I would like for us to discuss this a little bit. We might be able to tweak this contract a little bit. I know that it would, it relies on a state approval on certain things, but if there's other things that we might be able to change on it, or we, it could, we could make it better to move forward, then I'd like to do that.
So is that, is, we have a motion to approve, but no second. So is this a substitute motion? What is your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion to delay for further discussion.
Second. When is the, when is the contract up? So we'll need to try to reconvene before that.
I believe it is September 30th. Is that correct? October 26th is when the contract is up.
Well, we'll just, we'll make sure that we bring it back well before that.
Is there something specific that we're?
We have a lot of people gone. You're gone. I'm sorry.
Is there something specific that we want to amend in this contract? This contract has been in place since 2009, and we've done two five-year extensions for CCVB to provide the promotion services for Columbus.
Right. That's my point. It's been in effect since 2009, and I know that we've, we've just approved an extension, you know, just like it gets put on the agenda. But have we really looked at it and reviewed it and seen where there might be something that we can improve upon? Because 2009, what was happening back in 2009 is totally different than what's happening into 2025. And I think that there, we have an opportunity every time we do a contract extension to take a, take a short pause, review it, see what's working, see what we might need to tweak and make it better. And I'd like to, I'd like to take that short pause and really look over it and get some insight from Ashley to see where it, it may be lining up with what her future for that, for that is, and where we may need to just make a few changes.
I'll be happy to meet with Ashley and review the contract. We've.
Okay. So there's a motion to delay. Or is there, there was no second?
There were.
Was a second? All right. So there's a motion and a second to delay. Before we take the vote, Ms. Matena or Mr. Halter, would either one of you like to make any comments or just wait until we can bring everybody together to discuss it?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. And City Council, Pace Halter. I serve as the current chair for the Visitors Bureau. Appreciate the time this morning and consideration of the contract. We obviously went through the contract, and it's before you without recommendation for change, but I think looking at it is a good idea. And so I think we're very open to, to going through that process if we think there is something meaningful in there that's worth looking at. Ashley, and I'll invite her up here in just a second, she, she did come with some statistics that she can share today, and then if we want to come back and do a larger presentation, we can certainly do that. But I do think we have a fairly narrow window of time, so I just don't want this to slip too far. So any questions I can answer from council or?
Question of Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Huff.
In reviewing the contract and what we've been doing the last three or four years, did you see anything that was different or?
No, the contract largely has unchanged. So just as a reminder, it's an 8% tax that's paid entirely by the hotel motel industry. That is, that 8% is split, 4% to CVB, from which they fund sports council and arts council. The other 4% remains at the discretion of this council to determine how it gets allocated. That's the way it's been in the, in the current contract and is proposed in the future contract or the contract extension.
Yeah, because I know Ms. Matena has been here for a while, and you all have done a great job. So I just want to make sure that you all get together and make sure we're doing what we need to do because we had an opportunity during COVID that some things were done differently, and it paid big, big dividends for the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Counselor Kogle.
This is a, just, I guess, a blanket statement or maybe towards Ashley. I'm in favor with Counselor Crabbe. I think we might have done this a little bit with Uptown when their MOU came around as well, of just going back and taking a, taking a look at it instead of just pushing it through, if you were, because that's what we've always, we've always done. I know within Uptown, we've had a tremendous amount of growth, especially over the last four or five years. And talking with Ashley when she came on board, I'm, I'm very excited to, to have some new leadership. I would like to see what the increase in the amount of, of funding that's coming in from the hotel motel ta, or hotel motel tax with the addition of the, the new hotels that are within that footprint. And then specifically for Ashley, because we, you and I kind of talked about what, where CVB was going, I think before we sign off on, on this contract, and I, and I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing, and I'm not saying that I, I don't agree with it at all. I just, I would love to see where CB, CVB is going in the next three to five years and what the changes that we're going to see under, under Ashley's leadership will be. And I mean, that's, that would be my intention on having a small delay, just so that we can kind of get all of our ducks in a row and know exactly what we're agreeing to and making sure that we're on the same page going forward. So again, not, not because I don't disagree, or not because I don't agree with, with the contract. I just want to, we've got a little bit of transition here. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we have a really great relationship going forward.
Counselor David.
Well, I was going to wait. Was it going to be a presentation or anything was?
No, sir, no presentation. Ashley just has some statistics that she can share.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. So, well, look, Ashley, thanks. I know you sent me an email recently and been able to get back with you. I had to go to Houston, take care of some baseball stuff, but I'm back now. So I've, I've had the intention of getting with you, and now I see this. So I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with some dialogue on all this. What's interesting, what's interesting is that, you know, over the years of, you know, I understand the industry. I've seen the penny go from in the mid 300s to all the way now over 700,000 a penny, you know, which has been interesting. I didn't know, I didn't know that by state law that it says that no more than, or no less than 4% goes to trade and conventions or the CVB. So I, I didn't realize that. And then the sports council penny, which I was involved in that, comes out or is distributed through the CVB. And then, of course, y'all have done some allocations and some things in the past. So that's, that's kind of interesting. I would, I would like just to ask specifically while we're here today. I know that we did during COVID, we did, you know, to, to help, we did some loans to the CVB. I don't, I don't know where that is. I don't know if we've recovered that or it's been satisfied. I'm getting a head shake, so I guess that's a yes.
Yes.
That's taken care of. And then, you know, always, the one thing that I always look at is that I think it's under protocol or policy that we always, all entities that receive funding from the city or were involved in, that you're supposed to submit your budgets and you're supposed to submit your financials every year. I haven't seen those. I'd like to see it. So maybe, you know, the pause is for dialogue or whatever these things can get to is it should be part of all this. I don't, you know, that's what I, I would like to see. So if we're going to take some time, if that's the wish of the, the council, and I know Mr. Halter said that he's, he's okay with those things too, that just, you know, let's, let's get all that attached so we can kind of go through it and, and understand it a little bit better. I, I think that would be relevant and appropriate to do that. And I don't know if it's been done. I think we, I don't know if it's done through finance, but, you know, it, it's supposed to come to council during the budget process every year. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing things transparently and, and by the, by the policies we have in place. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Chambers.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, I think, you know, being able to review and possibly revise the contract if need be, I think, is essential for a successful partnership. So I'm not opposed to us looking at it, and if changes need to be made, we, we can modify because in order to make this work, we, we got to have a partnership. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your leadership, and whatever we need to do to make it work, let's make it work. Thank you.
Counselor Kogle.
Just slightly off topic, but if we have any new contracts that are coming up similar to this, is that something that council can get ahead of time rather than just the Thursday or the Friday before, before the council meeting? I think that would help save some of the time and the dialogue going forward. So if we have any, like, big contracts that are coming up, can we start talking about those sooner? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Yep. And this was an unusual, you didn't get it as early because we didn't have much time. We just, we had to, we canceled one meeting and then set the other one. So it was a little bit unusual. We do try to get them to you. Plenty of time for you to take a look at them. All right. Any further comments?
No, sir. I would just, other than, in the essence of time, I would just suggest rather than Ashley make comments, we'll just prepare a presentation that we can come back, include these with the budget and the other stuff that was requested.
All right. Well, listen, y'all, thank you for your patience. Y'all waited a long time out there for, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, we've got, we do have a motion second to delay on the table, and all those in favor of that delay, please. Well, it ought to be done by the first week. No, I would think no later than the first meeting in October.
Right.
Because otherwise, we're going to get a little bit close to their deadline.
Yeah.
So it's October 14th?
October 14th.
Okay. So we will, there's a motion second, Counselor, to delay till the 14th meeting. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks to lay.
So item number two on the city manager's agenda is the temporary use for ostensible acres.
Motion second to approve item two. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and Counsel, you can enter your votes.
And just for information, staff can issue a temporary use permit for 10 days, which was done from September 9th to September 19th, and it requires council approval to extend it past that 10-day period. And this is for a fall market in Uptown.
Okay, and that's approved.
Item number three is a hazmat response fund grant for $1,567.35.
All right. There's a motion second to approve the hazmat grant. Any discussion on that item? Please put it on the screen, Counsel, any of your votes, and if you want to finish describing what that's for.
And this is to purchase equipment used by the fire and EMS department for their hazmat team. There's no matching funds required.
All right. There is a motion to approve items four, five, and six. Is there any one of those that someone would like pulled or further discussed? All right. Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and remember that you're going to cast one vote, but that counts for four, five, and six. And Deputy City Manager, if you would while they're doing that, explain that.
Yes, sir. Item number four is the sleep center mattress donation. This is for 28 Tempur-Pedic mattresses valued at $24.99 each for a total donation of $70,000 from the sleep center to the Columbus Fire and EMS Department for their stations. Item five is the Columbus Police Department donation from the Columbus Kennel Club in the amount of $5,000 to assist with necessary equipment, supplies, and training for the canines. And item number six is a grant from International Paper to apply for the amount of $50,000 to help fund the purchase of a public safety robot. You've seen multiple requests come in for grants related to this robot. The total cost of the robot is 410,465.35. So they're trying to apply for different grants for the purchase of that robot. On the purchases, we have three items on purchases. Item A is fire hoses and nozzles for fire and EMS in the amount of 131,576.
All right. Motion second to approve all the purchases, A, B, and C. Any, anyone would like pulled out of there? All right. Once again, you'll cast one vote, but it'll be for A, B, and C. Please put it on the screen, and Deputy City Manager, continue.
Again, item B is course instructors for the Department of Human Resources. This is an extension to the contract through January 17th of '26, while the RFP is being advertised and the process is being done for the next contract. Item C is a contract extension for banking services with Synovus Bank through June 30th of 2026, while the RFP process is being done. And we have one update today for you from the Inspections and Codes Department.
Do you have something, Counselor David? Yes, sir.
Could, City Manager, could you just touch on C real quick? And is that local or is that the, the agreement that we do outside the city with the, up in North Carolina?
It includes the lockbox, but this is all banking services, so the lockbox is one of the services that's provided through this banking contract.
So we're still essentially running that through, in this case, Synovus?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought they were kind of separating out of that and we're, we're dealing with a separate entity.
It is a separate entity through the contract that we have with Synovus.
Okay, so they got some kind of management side of it?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a third party through Synovus Bank.
Okay.
And it's part of the banking services, so.
I'm, that makes sense. I guess the channel's coming from them back into the, back into Synovus.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Director Pruitt?
Good morning again, everybody. Just have a brief update. Don't get a lot of opportunity just to brief counsel on the work of inspections and codes and our 31 staff members that we have. So I did just wanna start out with permitting and inspections. This is just a chart showing the value of construction it put in place in Columbus over the last five fiscal years, you know, ending last June 30th with the end of FY '25. So you can see we average between 300 and 400 million dollars worth of construction work. That's all the new construction, you know, renovations, commercial, residential, anything completed in town. You can see FY '24 was a lot. Most of that increase was city projects. That includes the Judicial Center and Synovus Park is why that number grew so much. You can see it's pretty steady, the overall investments that are done in Columbus. One update, this happens every six years. So for some of you, it's the first time since you've been on council that we've gone through a code change. Columbus uses the state of Georgia's minimum construction codes as our construction codes. So the state goes through every six years typically and adopts the new version of the code. So today, if you were to build a structure, it would be done under the 2018 version of the codes. If you build a structure after January 1st, 2026, you will be using the 2024 code. So there are a few changes, nothing significant. And we are currently in the process of working with the Home Builders Association, some of our other development groups to make sure everybody is aware of this change. But again, the people that have been around in this industry, they understand that every six years, Georgia goes through this process. The other exciting update that we have is our Civic Access Self-Service Portal. It is live, and a majority of everything that inspections and codes does is on the portal and can be done online. So I have a little demonstration here and a couple slides, a little video to show you. But all of these types of plans and permits, plan reviews and permits are available to be online. We've had great feedback with all of our customers that have used this so far, especially the commercial building folks. You know, if you're building a multimillion-dollar commercial facility, when we've required you to submit hard copy of plans, it would be several hundred dollars at a minimum to print those plans off and deliver them to our office. So that expense has gone away for those developers. And again, it's really just kinda streamlined everything. Right now, we are living in both worlds, so you can use the portal or you can still do it the old-fashioned way with a paper copy. I'm targeting no later than the first of the year, we will switch over for a lot of these permit types to online only. We don't wanna take your paper. We don't, we're not gonna store it anymore. We're gonna do everything digitally. We're gonna use technology to be most efficient. So we'll give everybody plenty of warning time before we make that full transition, but that is the intent of this process. We still are working on a couple things with IT to get short-term rentals, those permits on the portal. Hope to have that done this year, so renewals, when they start next year, we can do that all online, as well as certificates of occupancies to get those online. So I included a link to the portal. And again, I want, I do wanna thank the IT department and Finance Department. We've worked very closely with those two groups. You know, we started with really no infrastructure to move all these things online from where the payments go, how you take the payments, all those little details. So we appreciate all of their assistance. We do intend on, in October, offering a couple in-person classes. Again, we'll work with the Home Builders Association, some of our other trade groups to get the word out on those, but probably reserve the community room, ask them to bring their laptops here, and we can walk them through how to submit for a permit. So when you go to that link, this is the webpage as you see it. And again, the first thing you wanna do is create an account. So you click that link on the top right, and it'll take you through, it's just like you create any other account. You know, it's gonna validate your email address, all of that good stuff. And then I have a little video here. So this is a video on how to apply for an electrical permit. So on that first page, you hit apply. You're gonna navigate to the type of document you're looking for, whether that's a permit or a plan review. We have all of our permits listed there. In this case, I wanted a change of service electrical permit, which that would be if I'm upgrading my meter at my house. I have a 150-amp service. I wanna go to 200-amp. I added some new appliances. You search for your address. I use the annex in this location. You add it, you hit next. You can add a description, give us some details about what you're trying to do. Again, in this case, make believe we're upgrading the electrical service. You need to add a contractor. Obviously, we are required to issue permits only to licensed contractors or to homeowners. So you can add yourself if you are the homeowner. But in this case, I'm gonna be both the applicant. I'm not a licensed electrician, but in this case, I am. It's gonna go to the next screen, which is gonna ask for a little bit more information. So it's gonna ask you the amps on the service. You know, again, 200, if it's a big industrial, you might have, you know, a lot more than that. The number of meters, that's how our fees are calculated. So if I have a big facility, you know, I might have more than one meter. And then it asks you your power company, that's so we know who to talk to to help you turn on your power. And then you're required to upload some documentation, you know, business license. You gotta upload your state card so we can confirm your license to do what you're trying to do. Copy of your driver's license. Hit next. Those are going to upload into the system. And again, all this can be done from your desk or the contractor's desk. You can review it, make sure all your details are right, and hit submit. So that whole process took two minutes. And from there, it comes to my staff. My staff reviews it, creates the fees. And once everything's in order, you can pay the fees, and then your permit will be live. So again, that was a two-minute process. Before we had this, you know, if your office was 30 minutes away from my office, you know, it took you over an hour, you know, to come down and get an electrical permit. So it's certainly very beneficial for the customers. You know, our work as the, the city still stays the same. We gotta remove, you know, review the scope of work, review the licenses, make sure all that's good to go. But from a customer perspective, it's definitely a lot easier. So again, it's out there. I encourage anybody that's trying to get a permit, you know, to look into it, and we'll be glad to help you, you know, if you have any issues with that. And I did just wanna touch briefly on code enforcement. So we have hired two sign-in licensed inspectors that were approved earlier this year by city council. They have been trained, and they are actively enforcing our ordinances. For, as far as the business license side, on July 31st, Finance provided inspections and Code with a list of businesses that had not renewed. There were over 1,000 on that list. 906 of those businesses were in Muskogee County. And code enforcement is currently visiting all those businesses that have not renewed for 2025. As of a couple weeks ago, we had visited 373 businesses. So that number is over 500 now that we have gone to. At that time, 178 of those 373, after we talked to them, came into compliance. 59 were confirmed to be out of business. We have not been able to make contact with them at this time. And then 136 were still in process. So the intent, our intent, along with the finances, once we've worked that entire list of 906 businesses, is we will give you an update on, you know, how many came into compliance and how many we were not able to contact. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are.
Doesn't appear to be any.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Thank you, Senator.
And that concludes the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get started, I did wanna state for the record that Counselor Davis is in favor of the delay for item one and for the approval of items two through six on the city manager's agenda. Item one on the clerk of council's agenda is a resolution. This is ratifying the change to the meeting schedule for this month. Council needed to, excuse me, needed to cancel the meeting for September 9th, and we rescheduled for today. We just need a motion and second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Item two is a resolution.
All right, motion second for approval. Any discussion on that item? All right, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
And that is excusing Counselor Tucker from today's meeting. We have minutes of various boards.
It's a motion second, received the minutes. Is there any that anyone would like pulled or reconsidered? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
And I do have an add-on resolution that would excuse Counselor Anker from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve Counselor Anker. Missing the meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. First, we have the mayor's appointments, and any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. We have the building authority of Columbus. There is a vacant position on that board for CVB. We've got the seat of Lauren Becker, who is not eligible to serve another term, and Miles Greathouse.
I have two for that position, but I have to, I wanna run them by the CVB first.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the housing authority of Columbus, the mayor is nominating William Bergen for this vacant seat.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Bergen. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? She's approved.
For the pension fund employees board of trustees, there is a vacant position for the business community.
Try to bring that next week.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
I'll try to bring that next week.
Thank you.
In other words, no, I don't have one to say.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the board of honor, we have Beth Harris.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Harris. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have two nominees for the Liberty Theater Cultural and Arts, excuse me, and Cultural Arts Center Advisory Board. We have Cletus Richardson and Z. Lawrence Bryant. They may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm both of those individuals. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have district seats, and they may be confirmed at this meeting. For the Civic Center Advisory Board, we have the seat for District Eight that's vacant. And Counselor Garrett is nominating James Jordan.
Motion second to approve Mr. Jordan. All, all that, that is all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Next, we have Community Development Advisory Council. We have the seats for District Two, Six, and Eight that are currently vacant. For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, we have Abdel Hernandez, who is interested in serving another term. This is District One. Okay.
Motion second to confirm Abdel Hernandez. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, for District Three, we have Tracy Walton King, who is eligible to serve another term if Counselor hoof.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Walton King. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Thank you. For District Five, Paul Berry III, who is, excuse me, not interested in serving another term, so we will need a nominee, Counselor Crabbe. Then we've got Walter Taylor, who is eligible to serve another term.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Taylor. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Thank you, Counselor Kogel. Next, we have District Nine. Scott Taft is not eligible. For the Youth Advisory Council, we need nominees for Districts Nine and Ten. For council appointments and nominations would be listed at the following meeting. That's next Tuesday. We have the Animal Control Advisory Board. We have a vacant position for the Georgia Licensed Vet. And Counselor Crabbe is nominating Dr. Joe April Brown.
Motion in a second to approve.
This will be brought. This will be brought back at the next meeting. Then we have the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. We have a vacant position for Representative Senatorial District 29. There's two vacant positions on the Liberty Theater and Cultural Arts Center Advisory Board. Judge Raniere is not, excuse me, does not desire to be reappointed for New Horizons. And Mr. Mayor, I do apologize, I didn't have my notes from our agenda meeting. You wanted to nominate Miller Robinson for the CVB board to succeed Lauren Becker.
I do, and he's one of the two that I'm gonna bring back. I just wanna make sure it's okay with her.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I very quickly did wanna say, and she's gonna be very irritated with me, this is Brittany Jones, your new Assistant Deputy Clerk. She's been with us for 10 years, and we recently promoted her, so you'll be seeing more of her.
Won all these minutes tight by four o'clock today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And we did have a request for an executive session. Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney? Reason for that executive session? Litigation. All right, do I, oh, Counselor Davis? Oh, yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to just, you remember, we had a very productive meeting when the actuary all came, and we had had a great discussion. I think there were some plans to go back and continue to discuss it. But before the year's over with, I think, you know, things are looking even better from my perspective as far as the indexes across the board are performing. The funds should be performing well, that we have that conversation or try to, try to discuss that. Are you, can you put that on the radar somewhere, that we can come back before the end of the year?
Glad you brought it up. We've got it, we've mentioned it to the Pension Review Board the other day. And we're in a process of putting that together so that we have kinda captured everything that counsel had mentioned. We've had some other requests made from some of the employees to take a look at. So I don't know if we'll bring all of them, because you pay for every one of them to look at. But we're gonna bring back the ones that counsel mentioned, and, and you'll have an opportunity to review them all.
Well, I'm not in a hurry, but I mean, before the end of the year, maybe, or something like that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yep. All right, Ms. Alameen, I apologize, I forgot you.
I don't know how you could do that.
Well, it was a slip of the mind.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I heard the presentation on the design for a new jail, I was struck by all the consultants reporting that the sheriff had looked at 800-bed jails as a way of deciding on having a 1,600-bed jail. That is a mega jail. In my research on jails, jails are designed as small, small places. When you get to large, you're up to 999 beds. So why does this 1,000-bed jail currently needs to be over 50% larger? With 1,600 beds is what I heard. That sounds a bit scary. As Nathan Deal said when he was governor, mass incarceration is not sustainable. But this jail keeps people in it for two years without being indicted. That's been going on for the 14 years I've been here. Something is very wrong with the jail that keeps people in it for two years without being indicted and going to trial. We're talking about violating people's constitutional rights, their human rights, the right to a speedy trial. All of that is being violated. And if you're talking about adding 600 more beds to it, who are you gonna be arresting? Is it gonna be the homeless? Is it gonna be the mentally ill? When I was arrested in 2013, I got to see how the jail operates. And the jail operates very well if you're not broke. Cause I went to the ATM and got myself out of there in less than three hours. But people were sitting on the floor in the jail. Oh, yeah, a new jail is needed, but doesn't need to be 1,600 beds. I think there needs to be some public hearings with the sheriff coming up in here explaining why he needs a 1,600-bed jail. We haven't had one of those talks with the mayor in a while. I think a talk with the mayor is in order on what are you planning to do with this level of incarceration in this community? It should be questioned by everybody, everybody. We don't need a mega jail. It should be questioned by everybody, everybody. We don't need a mega jail. Who are you planning on arresting? That's the question. Talk with the mayor, we need that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we do have a request to go into executive session to discuss litigation. I need a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. Thank y'all very much. All right, we were in executive session to discuss litigation. And I'm going to call upon the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we passed the resolution around the table. This will settle all claims of Linda Kathleen Borum filed in U.S. District Court against Sheriff Greg Countryman and the City of Columbus for the total amount of $17,500. It's ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve the settlement. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.